I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, through the Republic of which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, in the great and justness of our world.
All right, if I could start with the motion to accept tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
All right. Very good. And now we start with something really fun, which is recognizing our students.
Yeah, so we have a long list of students that we want to recognize, but unfortunately, not all of them are here. And we were going to start with Main Street School, but I don't see our Main Street School students here. So I'd like to invite Mr. Cohen to come up to recognize a number of our amazing high school students on some tremendous accomplishments. So, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. I thought I had more time. I'm chewing down a mint right now, so forgive me. This is actually really exciting tonight because not only are we recognizing a tremendous number of amazing high school students, but we're recognizing high school students in a whole host of different ways. Tonight, we have the great pleasure of recognizing our students for an amazing performance in the arts. We had students that won awards through the National Scholastic Arts Award and Writing Program. We also have students that are being recognized tonight for work in our Science Olympiad Program, which is our first year in the high school, so we're excited about that. And also, we have students that are being recognized for the work in our science research program. So it really is showing our students amazing range, and it's really exciting to be able to do this. So first, I'd like to highlight students that received awards in the National Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. This is a program where students are very self-directed and really need to sort of show their own personal commitment to go out of their way to submit work. They can submit work in writing, or they can submit work through the arts. And we actually have one student that was recognized for both. Students have the ability to be recognized first at a regional level, and if they receive a gold medal at the regional level, then their work is able to go on for recognition at the national level. So it is with great pleasure for me to tell you that we have a student who wrote an amazing piece of writing. In fact, it was something that Mr. Samuelson has talked to me about throughout the year because he had a chance to read it, and was first recognized for gold at the regional level and then silver at the national level. And this same student also submitted a photo that was recognized and received gold at the regional level. So it's with great pleasure for me to recognize Annie Horowitz. Congratulations, Annie.
Congratulations.
That's wonderful. And I ask you to offer this as a certificate of recognition.
All right. Next, through the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, we had another student that was recognized for multiple pieces. They were both photos. And in one case, the student was first recognized at the gold level at the regional and then silver at the national level. And then, actually, Janita, was it one photo? So it was one photo. She was recognized at both levels. First, she got a gold at the regional and then silver at the national. It's a great pleasure to recognize Janita Shocking. So we had a chance to actually put out a Facebook post about all of these award winners, and some of their artwork was there, so if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to do it. The next student was recognized at multiple levels, three different awards and really incredible pieces of art. One was a Gold Key Award at the regional level, another was a Silver Key at the regional level, and actually, it was two pieces that received gold at the regional level and three separate pieces that received honorable mention, for a total of six. Is that right, Julia? Six awards? Six or seven? I think I'm shortchanging you wide. So congratulations to Julia Cowdripoli for amazing work. Trying to see who's here right now. Next student who won a Scholastic Art Award received two awards. One was a Silver Key Medal at the regional, and another was an honorable mention. And actually, it was two Silver Keys, so a total of three awards, and that goes to Jimmy Park. The next student for the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is a student who received two honorable mentions at the regional level, and that's for Samantha Kimura. Samantha here? Samantha's not here, but we should give it up for Samantha. And we also had another student who received an honorable mention for his writing work, and that was also at the regional level, and that was Joshua Rinn. So I don't think Josh was here. Excellent. So we had a number of students that were recognized for Science Olympiad. I don't think I see them in the audience tonight, but I'd like to mention them, especially since it was our first year bringing Science Olympiad to the high school. So we had two students that worked and received fifth place for their work in optics category, and that was Jerry Wu and Chris Meinwang. We also had Jerry working with Rishikesh Marabushi and got a seventh place for material science. We also had Chris Meinwang and working with Jerry Wu again and getting a fifth place also in the optics category. We had Rishikesh and Isha Thacker, who worked together on chemistry lab and received eighth place. So if we can hear it up for those students. And then we also recently had students competing at WSEF. It's the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and we have some students who received awards there and certainly excited to recognize them. So first, a student has already come up tonight. He won the silver medal for Behavioral Social Science and Voluntarism: The Efficacy of Volunteers in Shaping Mongolian Student Learning, and that goes to Jimmy Park. The next student also won an award at the U.S. Chester Science and Engineering Fair. She won a silver medal for Medicine and Health, and that was Kristen Lee. And the last student that we're going to be recognizing at the high school tonight is being recognized for three different awards, all in science research, three different levels. At the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, brought down a silver medal in cellular and molecular biology. At the Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, a first-place finish in cellular and molecular biology. And in such an impressive showing at the Annual Upstate New York Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, a bronze medal also for the same project in cellular and molecular biology. And it's with great pleasure to recognize Claire Song. Come on up, Claire.
All right, thank you. That's great. And looks like we have... Yes, well, thank you very much, Mr. Cohen, and congratulations to all of our high school students on those wonderful accomplishments. We'd now like to invite our Main Street Principal, Ms. Chapnick, to come up and acknowledge our GOB.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So we had our Ninth Annual Main Street School Geography Bee on March 9th. Leading up to the Geography Bee, we have what's called a written pre-bee, and 127 fourth and fifth graders participated in a written pre-bee. From those 127 students, 10 fourth graders and 26 fifth graders were identified as our finalists, who moved on to be finalists... Oops, sorry. Identified as finalists to move on to the GOB. And so the bee lasted nine rounds. We went into an elimination round, a championship round, and after all that, I mean, it was nail-biting. It was pretty intense, the questions. I mean, very few of us in the audience could get it. I had an answer key, which I benefited from greatly as we progressed through the GOB. But after those rounds, Mohan Desai, who's here with us tonight, became our winner of the GOB. So come on up, Mohan.
I just want to mention that our runner-up was Shaleen Tacker, and I want to thank the PTSA because they sponsor the GOB. And also, this year's moderators were Dr. Scott Mozetall and Courtney Gylund, the High School Social Science Department Chair. So thank you.
Great, great job.
Thank you, Ms. Chapnick, and congratulations to everybody.
So now's the opportunity where you're welcome to stay for the rest of our wonderful meeting, or if you would like to take an opportunity, this is a chance to go see what else is happening out in Irvington. We have some great district updates coming along.
We do have a few.
District presentation, the speedy consensus agenda. Yes. Thank you, everyone. So unfortunately, one of our trustees, Catherine Palmieri, was not able to attend tonight, so she wishes she could be here, but we will see her soon at an upcoming meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over for some district updates.
Yeah, certainly, not all as exciting as our student achievements, but I do have a few things to report on that I think are of some great significance. As everyone in the room, and hopefully many watching at home, are aware, today we kicked off our first school quality survey across the district, which is an opportunity for our parent community, broader school community, our faculty and staff, and our secondary students to be able to provide some feedback on their school experiences. And the survey opened up today, as I indicated. There were email communications that went to our parents and our faculty, and plans are being made for students to be able to take the survey in school. For community members that are looking to complete the survey, you can access a link to the survey on our website or our Facebook page. The survey will be open until April 24th, so we encourage everyone to certainly participate because the feedback certainly will be very informative in helping us plan for the future here in our schools. So I thank everyone in advance for your participation. I'm also pleased to report that the district has entered into an agreement with a security firm named Alteris, who has deep experience in supporting school districts throughout the state. They have lots of experience in all aspects of school safety and security. They've already begun their initial work with us and will begin their hands-on assessment work in the very, very near future. And of course, there's going to be opportunities that they're going to identify for us to make improvements across the board. Their efforts are going to be multifaceted in that they're going to encompass not only the review of our security plans, they are going to help us, we to prioritize the feedback that we've received from faculty, and I work with faculty, and with the community members, and then they're going to partner with us in advising on the upcoming capital projects. So we're pleased to report that we're taking yet another step forward on that important work. And while our students and the budget are the primary focal points of this evening, I just do want to draw attention to one of our agenda items, where the Board will be adopting a modified version of this year's School Dishar calendar for 2017-18. We already had one modified date last week where we had school on the 6th, but I just want to be on record, as in reminding everybody once again, that Friday, May 25th, will be a school day, as will Friday, June 22nd.
Thank you. Great. That'll do it for our...
That'll do it for us.
So unfortunately, my agenda here had a weird printing error, so I don't know if you have yours up.
Nope.
Nope. There we go. So my question is, would we like to do the committee reports now, or maybe move those to after our presentation and discussion?
Pretty bad, generally.
Yeah, absolutely. So with that, hopefully no surprise?
No.
You ready?
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
So good evening. As we know, tonight is an all-important step in our process, where we have gone through multiple rounds of budget development. And tonight is the critical night where the Board is charged with giving the administration final direction for the budget that will be adopted next Tuesday, the 17th. But always important to ground everybody in our work and our process. And I will be speedy in the beginning of the presentation because we have done this on multiple occasions. But it's important when we think about our budget process, and doing so, we always think about our vision and the important steps that we have to take to ensure that we're always making our district stronger and providing for our students. And there's many, many different facets to this work, and of course, supporting our students' academic growth and their social-emotional growth, looking at the maintenance of our facilities, and we're looking at supporting our faculty with professional development. And then, of course, developing a budget that is fiscally responsible, that's under the tax cap, and wherever possible, as I referenced before, a possibility of tax-neutral bonds to enhance our facilities. In doing so, we've grounded all of our work in our strategic objectives, the six of them that directly link to the previous slide, but spell out what our priorities and our commitments are in the Irvington School District. In this budget process, as I've indicated, we've had a number of presentations, and tonight is that all-important night where we receive final direction for the budget that will be adopted. Each year, when we think about our budget, there are always variances that we have to consider and contemplate. And those shifts happen regardless of what we want to do with new things. For example, we consider salaries that increase. We have increases in students that are going to participate in occupational education. We have related services for our students with disabilities and our support that we have to provide at John Cardinal O'Connor School. We have increase in added district placements and tuitions, so when we think of the costs there, that increase at the rates of the host schools where our students attend. The regular equipment needs that occur from year to year to address needs in each of our buildings and across our facilities. We have obligations to BOSI's services, not only to support their operation, but the increase of the services that we contract with them. And then when we think about our employee benefits, there's aspects where there's little bits of control when we think about health insurance and the contractual agreements that we have with our employee groups. But where we don't have control is pension costs. And this year, we're seeing a large pension increase. When we look at it, 8.5 percent increase, which is painful and consumes a large portion of our budget, which we will see. And then additionally, we had a transportation bid, and this transportation bid is for added district services, and that resulted in an increase. So before we even start to think about any new considerations, our push-ahead budget, so to speak, the services from year to year increased over $1.7 million. So when we think about the budget, it kind of falls into different categories, the first being business and operations. And you can get a sense of all that's involved in that area. So it's Board of Education, it's Chief School Administrator, my office, and all of the expenses in and around that. Our finance or business department, our legal and human resources, facilities and operations, central data processing, which is technology on the administrative front, transportation, debt service, and a few other items. The item that is, of course, of quite importance to all of us is when we think of what happens in the classroom, what is really student-facing. So we think about everything from an instructional side. We think about our library and media centers, technology, our guidance services, all of our curriculum development that occurs, the supervision, so I look to my administrative colleagues in the audience tonight, our extracurricular programs and co-curricular activities for our students, and of course, special education and our PPS services, which include our psychologists and health services. So throughout this process, as I've indicated already, that...
I don't know where the feedback is coming from. A little distracting.
I don't know if there's maybe a microphone that's batteries dying or something. So we presented in February, we presented the operational, the business side of the budget. Then in March, we presented the curriculum. And after considering our needs and feedback from the Board, we looked to balance a budget and present... And then presented the proposed budget. Following the proposed budget, we now are considering that feedback and making some final adjustments, and also considering revisions that have come in from the state budget process, which is good to hear, that we've got some increases in our state aid, which I do want to say that not all districts were so lucky. So there's certainly ups and downs, and we're glad to be on the positive.
And there was a threat to take away a lot more, so...
Yes, yeah. So and my appreciation to our trustees and any community members that joined us in our advocacy efforts to ensure that they did not defer more funds from the state back to our local school districts. But in the process of balancing this budget, we remain true to our strategic objectives. We stayed focused and really targeted fiscal sustainability. We sought opportunity for efficiencies wherever possible. And then there were considerations that we discussed throughout this process that we decided that we had to postpone, whether for future budgets or for looking possibly at a capital bond down the road. So when we look to where we are in the final considerations, and this reflects the conversations that we've had along the way, we're left with a handful of items, and items that are all critical and that link to our strategic objectives, as previously we've mentioned. And we can see we've broken them into the two different categories aligned with our budget process, the first being operations and finance, having a part-time clerical position associated with the district clerk work to not only support the work that happens in this room and the work of the Board of Education, but to support the many FOIL requests that we receive and also to serve as the district's registrar. We've had, just as I said a little while ago, we launched a community survey, and we are budgeting currently to continue to do that for next year. Built into that $20,000 cost, I do want to note, is a piece of money that's also for professional development, for the administrative team to be able to work with that data. We have a maintenance mechanic, which is an additional maintenance worker, so when we look at net costs, we have $5,000, we have to recognize that clearly the new employee costs us far more than that, but by hiring this additional individual with HVAC experience, we'll be able to forego other expenditures that we would have by contracting services. So we anticipate the net cost of being about $5,000. Architectural fees of $22,000, these are associated with the capital bond project. Security initiatives, we added an additional $50,000 through this process, and I could say that we have a total of $86,000 in the budget tied to security initiatives for next year, and that certainly will be informed by our work with Alteris, our security firm, and our architects. This item we added a while ago, actually not long after the tragedy in Florida, we brought on an additional roving guard to provide more security here at the campus. And in doing so, through some internal transfers within the budget, it's actually cost-neutral, but we felt it important to list it here as a reminder that it is another position that sits within the budget. We are creating funds, a specific line to support our tax cert needs, and there's one on our agenda this evening. If you go back to our first budget presentation, we had a number ballpark of, I want to say, $400,000 here. But as we've gone through the process and looking to balance the budget, that number unfortunately has been cut back and cut back. I think we'll have some more opportunity to discuss that this evening as well, but this is a responsible investment that the district should be making each and every year to start to fund, rather than borrow, for our tax cert refunds. We talked about a late bus at the campus to provide opportunity for more students to stay after school and then have transportation to home. You will see an asterisk here. Initially, the proposal had five days' worth of service, and based upon the dialogue that we had at the last meeting, we scaled that back to four days, so we took off about $5,000 worth of expense associated with that. On the curriculum and instruction front, we're looking to complete our K-12 Continuum of STEM Education Project Lead the Way by adding a K-2 teacher. Then also looking at our elementary level, we would like to add a K-5 Guidance Counselor. Not only is this something that's of great need in supporting our students and school, but it is a mandate from New York State to have a comprehensive K-12 program in place, and this would support that. We are looking to add a number of assistant coaches to our athletic program. In doing so, that we look at this as being a restoration from cuts many years ago, really something that focuses on the safety of our student athletes, and of course, there's going to be an added benefit on the athletic instructional side. We've talked about the addition of a 7-8 special class, and this is cost-neutral because there's a tremendous amount of cost avoidance. If not having a program such as this, we'd be in a position where we'd be looking to send some of our students out of district for their education when we want to serve their needs here in our Irvington schools with their Irvington peers. And then, of course, there are benefits associated with all of the new positions at a sum of $83,000. So we can see that the total considerations that have been proposed are just over $495,000. I do want to provide a little bit of follow-up to the conversation that we had related to the late bus. Thanks to our secondary administrators who facilitated a survey to the school community, we had 105 responses, and those responses came back with the results that you see before you. Forty-two percent of the respondents indicated that the lack of late bus impacted their child's participation in after-school activity, and nearly 50%, 49.5, said their child would make use of a late bus, and another 15.2 said maybe. And again, as referenced before, we reduced the cost by approximately $5,000 by eliminating Friday service. So now back to the state aid that I referenced before. It's never cut and dry. They send out a number, this massive document with all the state aid runs, and you can run through and see all the different numbers that are in there. And there's different components to the aid. So on its face, we look at the foundation aid, and in the increase that we received in the foundation aid, you can see a number north of $63,000. However, when you look at the other two items here, excess cost aid and instructional materials, those are related to student enrollment. They're also related to expenditures, such as those in special education. So they're run on estimates by the state, and when you actually break it down and calculate it with your real-time spending and your real-time enrollment, there's always adjustments that have to be made, so unfortunately, we have to back out, as you can see... So unfortunately, we have to back out, as you can see, about $32,000, which our net change in state aid is just over $31,000. So when we take a look at our state aid revenues over the years, we thought it would be interesting to give you about a 10-year look back to see where our general fund revenues have fallen. And, you know, it's certainly a study in where all the different shifts are. But at the end of the day, the one thing that stands out, that aid is still growing here, obviously, but our aid remains at under $4 million, and that represents about 6.7% of our district budget. Interestingly, just as I said, aid has been growing. I would be hesitant, I would be remorse, or have remiss, however I want to say it. If we didn't talk about what hasn't been coming our way. So when we look back at the foundation aid history from where we've been, the state hasn't been doing their job. The state hasn't been fully funding the formula. And if we just look at the 1718 school year, if the formula was fully enforced, we would have received over an additional $1 million in state aid. So you think of the impact on bottom line for taxpayers, you think of the impact of challenges that we have with facilities, challenges that we have with tax certs, that money would be a huge difference. And if we step back and take a look over that 11-year window, you can see that there's over $9 million in aid that has not come to the Irvington School District. So where are we today? We're looking at a situation with a proposal that's before us, with total expenditures proposed at 61,312. The projected revenues exceed that with the additional aids and the reduction in the transportation costs of $36,000. So those are the adjustments and a part of the conversation that the board has to focus on this evening. When we think about the direction to go, we have to think about some of those things that are most pressing before us. And $36,000 isn't a lot of money to talk about in the scope of a large budget. But when we think about where we can responsibly place that money, the administrative recommendation is to look towards tax certs and towards school security initiatives. So the one caution that I provided last time, and a caution that still remains before us today, that this is a very tight budget. We are accounting for, in our special ed budget, all the known needs that are before us today. So that's looking at students internally that will receive services within the Irvington schools and students that may go out of district. There's always a question mark here. We certainly don't know if new children are going to move into the community, that may require special education services. And at the same time, you don't know if a child may move out of the community. So this is an area of concern. As I referenced before, tax certs are always an obligation to look at refunding community members' overpaid taxes. So in doing so, the district has had a history, as many do, of borrowing. So we certainly understand that there's always risk and exposure here on this front, hence the reason for us wanting to start to budget for some of the tax certs. And then, of course, facility needs are always before us. We do have responsible facility budget and staff that's capable of maintaining our buildings and grounds. But you never know when something large may go wrong, that we may need to adjust. So our first priority when we have something that comes up is to look internally. Where can we avoid costs? Where can we allocate costs? Where can we cut something? Where can we scale back? But if there hits a point when we're not able to do that, that's when we have conversations about fund balance and if we need to go to fund balance. So that is just a caution that the administration does need to provide to the board. So when we look at our expense trends, and I do want to say that these numbers and percentages, because we present them in both ways this evening, are all looking at actual dollars. So this is a five-year look back and looking at the growth that we've seen during this period of time. The first, when we look at operations and maintenance, this is an area that includes different things. So we're looking at the cost of employees. So you have to think of folks getting raises. You have to think that going back two years ago, we did add a maintenance employee to the fold, but it's also looking at our investment in the work on our facilities. Special education costs directly reflect our student needs in delivering services that are required per their IAPs. Employee benefits speak for themselves. When we talk about employee benefits, obviously multifaceted, but the big things that jump out that we have to think about, health insurance, and we're also thinking about pension expenditures. And then instruction. And this is an area that is all-inclusive, so we think about salary costs, we think about program growth and new initiatives that we've had over the past five years when we look at this window of time. And you'll see in another slide that as we came out of the financial challenges that hit us nationally, we can see where the board and community began to invest in the schools. The one thing, note, number to really note is to take a look at transportation to see a modest increase of only $42,000 in that period of time. I say that with an asterisk because we know that we're seeing increased costs this year that aren't reflected in this. But you can see that's really an area where it's pretty impressive to see that we haven't seen the level of growth. Areas of decline, the first speaks to debt service, and it's pretty simple in thinking about expiring debt. And the bottom line, when we think about areas of general support, how the numbers and codes are categorized, that really speaks to inconsistencies and fluctuation within tax certs and how tax certs have been refunded over the years. So here's the same data, but looking at it through a percentage base as opposed to a An interesting slide, I think, to consider is to look at the revenue history of our budget and areas of other revenues. So when we think about taxes, and apologize terribly for the text being so small on this slide, if you need a microscope or a magnifying glass, I'll be sure to find one in the science wing for you. But, you know, a couple of things to point out here, you see some fluctuations. So just as on the previous slide, we looked at growth in special education, you can also see a trend where we have increasing revenues associated with tuitions. The orange bar that has grown throughout the years. So that's a number that has ranged through this period of time from about $300,000 to $900,000. And when we look specifically at the 1617 school year, which is the last in this window, we had a number that was just north of $700,000 of revenue. You also look back one year, the pink bar on the bottom, where you see the large increase when we look at other unclassified revenues. There was a legal settlement that the district was awarded at that point in time, so that the big bump in that one year was the added revenue from a successful legal action on the district's part. So another look here now at the actual expenditures. And looking at this is, you know, you can see clearly what I referenced before, the beginning in 2008, a dip, and kind of leveling out 2009, and then dip, and then the movement forward as we began to restore programs, as the economy approves, as the community supported an override of the tax levy cap in one particular year. But you can see, you know, modest increases throughout the years. And just want to note that when you see the top bar, the light blue to dark blue, it's all, when we're looking at that, it's all similar categories in looking at taxer refunds, right? Debt service, but it was just classified differently in how it was paid out in past years, so it appears differently because it was paid out of different funds. So it's all debt service. So in sum, when we look where we are, we do have a strong budget, a budget that I'm proud to present to you tonight, a budget that aligns with our goals and is really responsible for our community members. It provides for increased security measures. It continues to invest in our district facilities. We continue to increase technology access for all of our students, and that's not only through improved connectivity, but through additional devices that will be deployed in our schools. We certainly are maintaining our commitment to continually enhancing all the experiences that our students have, whether in the classroom, on the field, on the stage. We talk about our support to our students' social and emotional well-being, and that's seen all across this, but most specifically through the addition of the guidance counselor. We continue to communicate our commitment to a K-12 STEM sequence for all of our students. We are committed to professional development on an ongoing basis, and of course, it complies with our tax levy cap. So in sum, to look at the finances that are before the board this evening, you can see our projected revenues. And in doing so, the one shift that you have here from one's presentation to the next is the increase in state aid. And then this slide has a, you'll see two tiers to it. The proposal as it stands today, less the $36,000, and then the addition of the $36,000 to bring us up to the tax cap. I have to say that I strongly recommend to the board that we take full advantage of the tax cap and utilize these funds as recommended earlier. But you can see the transition, it does bump up the variance a little bit from 3.7% to And then an overview of the proposed budget, category by category. And as you can see, it's highlighted, I think, in each of the last two presentations, that when we think of the cost of our staff, you're looking at a number of 72%. Budget revenue and expenditure, kind of bringing all the pieces of the puzzle together at this point in time. And again, now seeing one versus the other, highlighting the variances that we talked about throughout our budget process. But again, the 3.8% with a total budgetary change of just over $2.2 million. An overview of our tax cap, you can see the net increase coincidentally, based upon our low state aid ratio here in Irvington. The net increase of our tax cap levy is $2.223 million. Quick little link for our community members to figure out their actual taxes for the school portion of their taxes. And then our budget trend history and taking a look at where we are. This model, again, if we go back and look at the numbers, 3.8% aligns with us being at the tax levy cap for this year. So we're looking at modest increases for our community members. So our discussion, our discussion tonight lies in a few different areas because the board has done a lot of the heavy lifting along the way. So when we circle back to think about where we are and to give that final guidance tonight, there's the $36,000 that we referenced before with the recommendation coming from your administration to direct the monies to tax certs and/or security initiatives, and then other items that you may have discussion or question about tonight. So when we look at where we are, the next step is next Tuesday. This week will make any modifications to the proposal tonight, and the board will adopt the budget on the 17th. Then there is a formal budget hearing on May 1st, which is followed by May 15th, the budget vote and the annual trustee election. As you can imagine, Carol and I will begin our annual roadshow and get to see lots and lots of folks. And we begin actually next week after the adoption with a PTSA meeting. So there are many opportunities to be able to ask questions, to learn more about the budget in the next month and a half. So that said, Mr. Hannah, trustees, the discussion is yours.
Yes, thank you. And thank you. Each presentation has involved new work, new information, and today's, just like the others, has been great. So thank you very much for the work that you've put into it. In terms of discussion, I think it's essentially two rounds. One, if there are any remaining general questions, I'd ask that we start with those. And then just to close out, what remaining considerations or guidance we want to give. So as Dr. Harrison shared, there's the $30,000 that's different from the prior presentations due to some of the changes. And then, I mean, really coming out of last meeting, the main question that I heard from board members was about the late bus. So I would start with you, Marie, if you'd like to ask any general questions, if anybody else after you, before we get to that second round.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
First, the general questions, if there's, if you have disinformational questions about this presentation or about the budget.
So, thank you for the presentation. Regarding the security initiatives, if the $2,000 that's in the budget, during the presentation, you said it would be a total of $36,000, because existing in the budget is already 36, you're right?
Correct.
Okay. And that is a project that the BNG committee is going to take on based on this security firm's recommendation?
Yeah, so when we look at it, there's going to be recommendations that are going to come forth, and we're going to be looking at those, the low-hanging fruit, where we can make, get the best investment for the money to have any impact in and around each of our campuses. So I'm working with the recommendations that would come forth from, I would say, a combination of a security firm, but I think we process some of this, if there's any facility-type work with our architects, of course. But the recommendations would come through that process, and of course, I think buildings and grounds would be...
Okay. Now, I don't withhold the board approving a contract with them, is that correct? With Alteris? We don't have to because it's under the threshold?
It's a, it's a Boas East Coaster.
Right, I understood, but we still need to approve that contract?
No, Boas East Coaster is totally seat-dependent, but basically, we're just replacing one consultant and having a different consultant.
Okay.
And we did have buildings and grounds to be patients, because we didn't need to be a contractor.
The security consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
Catherine had helped us with that contract.
Okay, understood.
I hear that as we pull on.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. And are we going to go into late buses as well, or...
I mean, if you want to ask questions, I think in terms of weighing in, that's the second round, so...
Okay, this is more a question. So the late bus, 105 people responded, not necessarily 105 students, just 105 families. The one thing that I thought was slightly flawed in the questions is, out of those families, do they get busing? You know what I mean? So someone might think, like I'm just thinking, someone might live on Main Street or down a buck ad, they might not qualify for busing, but now they think because based on the survey, they might get busing. Like, I just think it's a little flawed, the survey, to truly, I mean, 105 respondents, how many students is that because, you know, $20,000 a measure, you know?
Just, and I think, David, I'm looking at you, I know in my time here, the late bus actually pretty much took any kid who was here east or west, north or south.
Many schools do that.
It wasn't, yeah.
They don't really look at who, who was in...
But isn't it going to be predetermined, different bus stops, and then you can walk from there?
We can do whatever we want. We haven't made, you know, this is a budget, we haven't made the actual agreement, but I know a lot of districts who actually just, you know, to bring your point, they just create like stoplight points, maybe along Broadway, because considering it to be larger, five or four, there's a lot of safety issues with walking that distance, because it isn't even a mile or quarter for some families. So there is that potential to create routes and create stoplight points. We haven't really done that far, because we first secured the funding and then we forgot the best approach to do it.
Okay.
Something, you know, which is working on, I would work with the transportation department and David and David.
Okay, because I kind of assumed that that part kind of was loosely figured out to arrive at the cost, no?
No, it's just the cost of one bus going north and one bus going south, and time involved.
Okay. Okay.
Got you really all the questions I had. I hate to get caught up on a bus, that's $30,000, but I guess we're here and rearranged it as well. The thing that concerns me is that when the questions were posed, when we say after-school activity, whether parents are, and if they have a child and a sport, that that includes activity. And so, again, my concern is that we have these responses that, yes, there's an interest, but will they actually board the bus? Parents saying, yes, my child will take advantage, isn't necessarily the same equation as the child actually will say, yes, I'll get on the bus. But that aside, my question to Carol is, is it possible that we try this, and if it turns out the kids aren't riding the bus, then come January, we just don't continue to get from the bus, right? I mean, we're not, this is not a yearly contract that we're entering into.
No, no, this would be something that we could try with it, and we could also, you know, we survey... survey ridership on all of our buses, but this would be certainly why we'd want to survey ridership on both.
Okay, because that's really where I would.
That would be a good way of.
Yeah, because, because it's something, obviously, that our principals feel strongly about. So I support this initiative, because you clearly have a basis in it. Just because my child may not ride the bus doesn't mean that it's not going to be taken advantage of. But as long as the survey is done, and we have the opportunity not to go forward with it, but I think it's worth the pilot, so in, under that circumstance, I'm in favor of it. My question, and again, I'm not sure if you want me to go there, is one that I've kind of queried before, and it may be too large a conversation for what, how you want to tackle this. But when I look at the budget, I really appreciate how much time was put into it. I think, I think it's very clear. I love the breakdown. I appreciate each of the suggestions that are in here. What concerns me is when we step back, and I've kind of had these conversations with others before, is that when we have 1,700 kids in the school district, and we're at the point where we have 204 instructional employees and 125 non-instructional employees, at what point, when we're at 77% of our total budget going towards instruction and benefits, do we say as a district, or do you advise us as superintendent, that we're at the tipping point? So, while I can agree and understand when somebody stands before me that we need to pay to PLTW a teacher to finish out that goal, and this was set before I came aboard, and I can understand now why we need a guidance counselor, at what point, when you come forward to us next year, or the year thereafter, if we're at 78% of the budget, or 79% of the budget, are we at a point where we say, we just can't make that hire?
Yeah, so I would say that question could be answered in a number of ways, and I don't think, no, that's necessarily percentage-based. I think it's, you know, we're living with our first year of working with our strategic objectives. And one of our prior conversations that we've had, and Mr. Hannah reminded us of a conversation last year as well, that, that your entire administrative team, so I looked at the audience, our colleagues, is to really, this spring, to sit down to have that conversation, to talk about, when we round this out, what else it looks like? Does it look like we may need? So, we know there's going to be nuance, right? There's going, there's that possibility where you have enrollment increases, where you have to add a section at kindergarten. Do you look at other mandates that could come down? The guidance is something that we want and we believe in. I would like to think we'd be having this conversation without the state of New York giving us the directive. But when we think of E&amp;L services, for example, state changed the requirements on us two years ago, we had to meet those requirements, we had to increase staffing. We know that we have changes in the demographics in our school community, and as students that are new language speakers, English language speakers, are moving into the community, that number increases, there may be things that we have to increase there. So there's things that, I think, stand on their own. But the bigger picture question that I hear you asking is, to fulfill that vision, that vision that we have for this well-rounded experience that serves kids K through 12, and all different types of interests and needs, and providing that solid foundation. You know, there's a point where I'd say we're probably pretty close to where those limits are. But we need the time as administrative team and really wrestle with where we see those other possibilities. And when we think of, you know, the PLTW piece, for one example, that's delivering on a vision and a mission. We know that we have a commitment to continuing to pursue the world language discussion that we've been having. And what does that look like? And if we implement a program, what are the personnel implications from, from those aspects? So I think we're in a position, as we move through this school year, that we're going to be coming up with what, a general sense of what that looks like. And it, it could be naming some particular opportunities, it could be looking at a few STEs when we think of full-time equivalent. But we're committed to having that conversation, and we certainly will be circling back to that.
I mean, that's really what I'm looking for, too, and especially with these two new hires, because when I look at the budget, and I appreciate how conservative it is, and it is a tight budget, with the rising special ed costs, tax certs, A D, I just think our hires are the most important decision we make, especially, as you say, that some of these are going to be unexpected, whether it comes from the students that come to us or it comes from the state. And if these are the two that you were recommending now, that are essential and important, then I agree that we go forward. But I would ask that this year coming up, that we really take a hard look at what number of employees we have, in relation to the students that we have, in relation to the percentage of the budget we have for instructional support. And I feel like we're getting to a tipping point where we're going to have to look at who's retiring and who we're hiring, and see if that all fits up. That's all I really have to say. But otherwise, I appreciate the thought that went into this, and I think it's very valuable.
Thank you.
I'd like to start off, I also thank the, thank you guys for hard work. For a longer way, if I can remember, and started the conversation, the amount of feedback you take, and the, it's a lift, and I'm thinking about this, it's clearly, in this final presentation, so thank you so much. I only have a couple of questions as well, because they've been answered most of them. They live in the same building. I guess I'll start with the bus. I mean, again, like you said, Deb, and I agree to think about $20,000, $30,000. I also think about, Joyce, how much did the playground cost?
Um, I don't know. We have, you know, it's.
And then the garden that you, or the fund that you use in the garden and all that stuff. I just keep thinking about those things, where that benefit the entirety of a, of a large group. And then I think about the survey and 100 people, and is it really even 100 people? Of course, I want to have a bus, because I see the benefit of it. Obviously, it's not, I'm not wanting to have a bus. I just think about the use of money, and thinking about when I watch Joyce sitting at a fundraiser, showing a movie, you know, trying to get this thing built, right, for kids, like, it just makes me, I think about it, you know? I just wanted to make that comment, just for us, as we go forward, to really think about those things, about how, and then the IEF, and all the different grants that they fund, and how can we, as a district, put money into those kinds of things? Again, it's not law, so we don't need a bus, so, not to, just wanted to make that comment. I, you know, I stand firmly behind the vision, you know, the budget is aligned to the vision and mission in terms of the project lead away. A lot of conversations we've had over time about, in particular, the science education in the elementary school. I just, I just don't want this moment to go by without, again, emphasizing that it's vital to start the science education in K through 2. And I just want us to be really true to the fidelity of how this program connects to the NGSS, and the vision for the NGSS, and, and the next-gen standards, and literacy and mathematics, if they're cross-cutting concepts and all that, and stuff. But really important that we do that work, so that we don't run into the staff who was upon the core gameless back in the day, or other people back in the day, just really be, make that worth it, right? Because it has such, like you stressed, right, over and over, and has such an enormous benefit to our kids. And also presents an opportunity to staff.
Not my comment. No, I'll echo everyone's comments so far about the process, and so I won't labor that. Just didn't want to piggyback on what Deb said, I think it was mentioned. But I think in looking at our staffing goals, I think the other thing we have to look at is not just the people, but what the expenditure is going to be. I know it's difficult to predict, three and four years out, what the staff makeup may look like and who may retire, but I think we do need to think about, you know, what that is going to look like. Because obviously, if someone's retiring and we're hiring someone else, that's going to free up potential dollars for other things. So I think, you know, we need to look at it, not just from a people point of view, but also from what we think our unit cost will look like, two, three, four, five years out, to the extent we can do that, so we can, you know, figure out both programs and bodies, but also, you know, where that's going to lie. So, you know, that's the comment I wanted to make, which is follow up on what Deb said. Otherwise, I think everyone else has, you know, hit on the other key points. So, more?
Can you pull the mic up?
Thanks, thanks to the administration for the work they've done. I have to go, I have to tread some of the same ground. My, I, I know of individual stories of kids who are unable to cross Broadway, because they live in condos on Broadway. And so, the importance of a bus that enables them to get home at that time after activities, and that's, again, assuming this particular kid is still in Main Street School, or would take advantage of this high school. He literally has to cross four lanes of traffic to get home if he walks, because he lives on the east side of Broadway, where there is an access. So, I guess, not to, not to take too much time with a single anecdote, but to say that there are safety issues here, and that there are kids who, for whom this could be a significant help, when there aren't parents there to pick up, as there, as there sometimes are in other families, is important. That said, I feel like we get a very tough, we have, in Irvington, never many benefits of scale. We are so small. And I think that's what makes this decision so difficult. And I'm wondering if there is sort of a bottom, where that, where that bottom number is, where the, for weekly use, or something like that, how many families are using it, how many students are using it, where it goes away? And is the first opportunity January, or, you know, can it happen before that or after that? I mean, I, honestly, when you're talking about $300 a kid, if this is being used, is that, you know, is that the right, is that the right use, is what I'm asking? And so I'm, I'm also torn. And then with, with the staffing question on Project Lead Away, I echo, I echo the questions here, and I feel like we have discussed over the, over this year, just how much competition there is, K through three, four kids' time. So, their time is limited, their minutes are limited, we are trying to, there's been an active discussion of what's the most important program to get in there? And we've heard that people came in prior years and said, science education, technology education, STEM education is what we want. And that preceded, those decisions preceded some of our terms. We're getting to, we're getting to this last part of the puzzle, and I guess, what we're all interested in knowing is, what effect are these, what effect is this STEM education going to have, and how are we going to be able to assess the program? In order to see whether it's benefiting the students in the ways that we all anticipate and want. And so I know we're very much looking forward to those kinds of assessments being made. And along with that, if we don't see that it's as effective, say, to have a teacher in the very early elementary, doing the same program as it is in the upper grades, is there, is there flexibility in this hire? And forgive me if this question was answered, I don't, I don't recall it being asked in the same way. Is there flexibility in this hire to teach other subjects? Or do we now have, if, say, five years from now, this, 10 years from now, this teacher has tenure, and we are looking at going away from this program, what will they be able to do in the elementary school?
They'll be in elementary certification. They can be, they can be a first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade.
Would they be able?
It has additional training of Project Lead Away.
Right. So they will have Project Lead Away, not, not a general science background, if we went away from Project Lead Away? Just general certification?
Yeah, you know, I, I made a similar statement instead of questions to Devon, to Brian, last week, so if anybody wants to watch the video, it was at the end of the meeting. But, yeah, I think, I think, you know, that's, we as a board need to be looking at the big picture, and that's, that's, I think, the big question, I think, you know, that's one of the questions I'll ask the board in a moment. I think that's the expectation that we have as we, as we go forward, is that we want to look at, at how we budget in new ways, and that, you know, we, thank you for showing that. To look back, we see that there was the cuts we've restored, even beyond that time, in terms of the staff that we've hired, and I think we can be really proud of the work that's, that's going on. But I think we need to start looking at it in different ways, and that, those are the types of questions and the expectation, I think. You know, one of the things I say, in terms of the work that we do, the questions we ask are best asked when we do this. So we're doing the budget process, we know that we'll be back here again a year from now. This is, this is a great process this year, it's going to need to look different next year, and I think that's, that's what we're asking for, and it sounds like that's the work that you're doing, in terms of working with your administrative team. So, so we appreciate that, and that is the ongoing conversation. You know, I, I, sometimes personally, I try and imagine, what's the threshold of what we should be talking about in terms of budgeted items? Because I remember being in the audience a few years ago, and a million dollar item went by with almost no comment, and there was, Artie probably remembers this distinctly, you know, a 40-minute discussion about whether coaches should have uniforms or not. So, you know, I'd like us to be a highly effective board. And so, taking, say, the late buses example, which is a very small sum at the end of the day, I think what we really, one of our main goals as a board, working and aligning with the administration, is to be able to improve our ability to answer, how are we doing? And that's, you know, in a more boring term, program assessment, in terms of any initiative that we're doing, what are the questions about, why are we doing it, how are we going to achieve it, and how do we know we're doing a good job? And so, as we improve upon having a process in place for these different things, I think a late bus type question would be one where we don't weigh in, that you have a process in place, and you can basically let us know the steps that have been taken, and, and show us that it's a great process in place about why it's here, how it was effectuated, and if it's not working out, you know, we stopped it, or if it is working, we're going to continue to roll with it. So, and so I would apply that to a bigger picture item, which is, you know, Project Lead Away, is a K through 12 program, it's a very ambitious program, it's one that, that I know has been, there's a great effort in terms of the fidelity to implementing it. I really appreciated the science fair in which I got to talk to Justin Winski, the teachers teaching the students that are taking it. Great enthusiasm, really elevated my understanding. And, you know, one of the great anecdotal comments that was repeated by several of the teachers, is that now as they're seeing students come in who've already had some Project Lead Away, that's advancing the work, that they're able to do much more sophisticated work, that they're getting through the curriculum that they'd previously done much faster, and now get to go deeper with the work. And that was very exciting to hear. And, but again, I'd bring back, you know, we have this program, this K through 12 initiative, I think this is a great area for being able to answer that question, to have a program assessment in place. So, you know, we have new things to look forward, but also with these existing relatively new programs, to assess, is it achieving what we hope it'll achieve? So as we go ahead and, you know, approve this budget, that's what I'm hearing, that that's something that I think, I hope we can be able to answer the question, how are we doing? So in terms of what I hear from the board, the real question that was echoed by a few people was, was about the late bus. What I would suggest and ask the board is, I echo Deb's suggestion, which is, why don't we give the opportunity to see how it works, knowing that it's really helping and making a difference? And I think it would be great to have you come back and say, how will we know? But that's something that they can pull a plug on or continue with? Is that something as a board that you support, or is there really, I mean, if some, do you feel like it's something else should be done with that?
Um, I, I think, I'm fine with giving it a try and trying to flush it out. I would keep in mind, if we're going to pirate it, keeping track of the numbers in the fall might not be a true indicator, because the fall, it's light out, it's nice out, and the north wind might be active oxygen to utilize the bus as they would maybe during those winter months, when it's darker out, and safety is more of an issue. But, you know... But, you know, if all things are equal, you know, if we could use the money in other ways, I mean, security is, at least for me, is pretty important, and if there's a little money here and a little money there to, you know, right now, we have $86,000 earmarked. I mean, I think some sort of system coming into the schools with IDs, I know there's a lot of things on the table for consideration that are more easily done, rather than the bigger projects that I know are going to have to go through SED, and God knows what the timeline is for coming up for those kind of projects. I don't even want to ask what that is right now. So, while I think it is important, and I think we have to keep that in mind, I also would like to keep, and, you know, you guys keep it in mind, the more money that we can allocate for security and for tax certs are also. I think, do you agree?
I'm fine with piloting the program, taking a ridership survey, and then come January, let's reevaluate it. If it's not being used, and that principle's anticipated, then we assign the money to everything that's appropriate.
The nod means you agree?
Yeah, I agree. I just, I'm just.
With hesitation.
No, no, with hesitation, just with the reiteration, like, I just, it really bothers me, you know, these little people's projects that we want sprung up across the district, and you're talking about the late bus. You know, they just want us as a large community, just a large, small community, to just remember that.
Yeah, I mean, but you can make a comparison, I think, to athletics, that, you know, that you have three teams, that's 100 people, and it's just going to stand out. So, I mean, there's any number of choices. Hence the nod. Yeah, hence the nod, yeah. Okay, and similar nods or comments? Okay. And then the other question was with the additional sum, which speaks to your point, which is, there's $30,000, and I personally would suggest that we look at, based on the security consultants, if there's a way that we can defer the security that that may be used.
Well, personally, if I'm wrong, but we don't have to say right now, I mean, the money is there, we can move it where.
You can transfer.
We can always transfer.
It's not an equi, so there's a few limitations in what you can transfer.
I mean, that's why I suggested that if there's, you know, like you were saying, there's some things that we may be able to do immediately, and that would create an opportunity, or there may be limitations on how quickly we can move on things.
Is there a timeline right now with this firm? They're going to come in, do the evaluation, is there a timeline, when they're going to provide this report?
By the end of the school year, they'll have a fair amount of information available.
And does everyone else similarly?
Yeah, I think we should allocate it to security in the first instance, wait for the report, see what projects can be accomplished, hopefully before the start of the next school year. To the extent there's any money left over, I would say then we assign it to tax cert, but in the first instance, that's assigned to security.
Okay, so I think that's where we're at with that. Yeah?
I don't have anything specific to object to here. I object to the idea that schools, large and small, have to spend money on this equally. That I object to.
Yes. No, to think about the billions that are being spent by schools on this issue is troubling.
And, you know, just to note, and I don't know if I can, a few words that, you know, when we think about the whole state budget wrangling that occurred, and one of the areas that wasn't funded, where there was initiative for school security increases. So, when we think about what we've seen happen across the nation, about the legislature in Florida that responded, and not that we necessarily want the same level of direction, but the availability of funds for schools to increase security in the schools, the availability of funding for school resource officers in every school, we're not seeing that locally, and it's quite the frustration. You know, I guess I want to say, on behalf of all my administrative colleagues, thank you for the kind words about the process. And I want to say, with the ability to look back six years, and to think what we've accomplished in six years, and what has happened in Irvington in six years, with confidence and pride, I can say, we have an excellent school district. And I think that the work that we've done, and when we say that, it's the variety of trustees that have sat at this table over those six years, first five and now seven, the work of the administrative teams along the way, and before Carol, we had Beverly here, and the administrative team, has taken us to a point where we're now having a different conversation than we've ever had. And I think that's something for us to reflect on. So, we're having conversations about how we pivot our work. There's confidence in the work that is happening, is what I'm hearing, and there's pride from the side of the board in where we've arrived. But now, it's figuring out, "How are we doing?", and it's thinking about, "Where's that capacity piece?", on a different, multiple fronts. So, you know, you've had a commitment from the administration with respect to starting that conversation about that capacity discussion. You know, there's a commitment from the administration in looking at and developing a model of program assessment. So, whether it's Project Lead the Way and/or other initiatives, some looking back, some moving forward, that's work that we're committed to. So, the conversations, when we move forward, there's going to be some different nature to it. And when I think of, you know, the idea, and it was music to my ears, and the example about, I think it was $6,000 already for apparel for our coaches, or $20,000 for our school bus, we don't need, we have other work that we need to do, we don't need to be here till 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night. Those are discussions that we don't need to have in the future, and that was wonderful to hear. When I think of the support in and around the bus pilot, I think there's lots of opportunity for us to look at how we target that communication, how we build in opportunities that we can not only take advantage of it, but to draw children to it, but it also puts us in that mindset, if something isn't working, we reevaluate. So, we thank you for that support. You know, and I look to my right, to my colleagues, and then to the audience, thank you for everything that you've done to get us to this point where we are today.
And so, do you want to give an opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question or make a comment? As you can go to the mic in the back, share your name, and we ask that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to? Great.
Hi, I'm Erin Bernstein, I'm the parent of a second grader at Dowslane. And I also commend you for all the work that was done on the budget process. I really understand and appreciate the amount of work that goes into this. I see my life flashing before my eyes as I see all these numbers. I do also have a couple of questions, and I don't want to belabor the $20,000 bus, but I wonder how many other items like that are in the current budget that potentially aggregate to $200,000 or $300,000, that because they're so small, we're not seeing it? And I often use the expression when I'm doing budget analysis, I think of low-hanging fruit. And, you know, you tend to pick out sometimes those things that are small, that aggregate to big dollar amounts, that have lesser impact on the population. So, while Chris and Carol and Dr. Gray, I know you're all working really hard, and you're aware of our resources and how it can be spent, I just, as a board, just hope, like, we're all working together to not lose sight of small dollars that can add up, and those pennies in the jar can add up really quickly. And with the way we do the process, I think it can, we can lose sight of it, and I just picture all of us sitting here next year, when the survey results came back, that the usage was fine, we're all going to forget about the $20,000, and next year, there'll be another 20 for something else, and something else, and it just sort of, it snowballs. And I don't want to take away from the high school principal's philosophy about it, because I'm sure he thought about it, and I get it, and my kid might want to take advantage of it. That was one question, or one comment. The other thing that I was curious about, I know in past conversations, we've talked about the enrollment trends, and being the parent of a student at Dowslane, I've seen the classes, kind of every other year now, going between six classes or seven classes, six classes, seven classes, and by no means is this accurate data that I'm looking at, but I happen to glance at the directory for this year for the kindergartners, and I noticed that the per pupil, the amount of students per class, was lower than what I've seen in the last few years. So, I'm curious if other students have moved into the district mid-year, and sort of what those numbers are, because I'm wondering if the trend that maybe we had been seeing over the last five years is not continuing. So, just something that I want to throw out there, I don't know if that's data that can be publicized or accessed, made accessible, like, what's that student enrollment for kindergarten? What does next year's registration look like? Just to have an idea, because the number of kids in the class seem low. And I say that as a parent who has not a lot of kids in the class, but larger, larger than the 18 I saw in the directory for the kindergartners. Other things, just to consider, I always feel like when I'm looking at data, right, and you're looking at your own data, you're sort of in a silo. So, how are we able to benchmark some of this spending against other districts that we think do it well? And I think it goes back to what Deb said about the FTE count and things like that, there's other districts of similar size that, you know, do educate their children in a good way. Are we doing it as efficiently as them? I know we're doing it differently, and I don't want to take away from that, but are we able to benchmark any of our data against any of the other districts? Just to have some sense of perspective, right? Because we all know what we're doing, and we keep adding every year to it, but we don't know how it looks sort of next to some of our colleagues or our neighbors. So, I don't know if that's data that's available or not. And Carol, I know you have nothing to do, so you'll get right on that. Those are all my only comments for today. Oh, thank you, Dr. Harrison, for giving the shout-out to early foreign language. You made my night. And I really do appreciate all the work and all the commentary about it, so thank you.
Just specifically to the enrollment question, I think.
I'd say the, you know, our enrollment has been relatively flat across the district. When we look at our enrollment, I think we're at 110 students so far enrolled for kindergarten for next year with six sections. So, you can do the math of how that works out. So, it's something that we monitor, literally, once we get, like, into March, we start monitoring on a weekly basis for that enrollment. To, you know, thanks to Carol and, you know, the Dowell staff, there's been kind of a revamped enrollment process, so we got a nice rush of folks earlier in the process. But now, we look at the stragglers, and those that haven't just gotten there yet, and we look at the new families that are going to be moving in, and we monitor those numbers closely. But we're looking at, you know, consistent, right now, projection to be consistent with where we were this past year with six sections.
And can I just add that prior boards and have had discussions specifically about kindergarten numbers, and this district in Wisconsin has changed, and I don't recall a change being made. We try to keep the kindergarten numbers on the lower end before adding a section, you know, under 20 ideally, even though as you get, go through Dowslane, and they keep, those numbers go up to closer to 25, 24 a class. But, you know, boards have made the commitment to keep kindergarten on the lower end purposely.
And we, generally, the only thing I would say there, there have been classes that were larger, but we've been continuing when we look at class size, and we've come in with six sections, we've maintained six sections through the elementary grade.
Just as a follow-up, I appreciate that data. From what I recall seeing, and again, this is sort of just maybe somewhat anecdotal from my experience, but I think the kindergarten classes were probably 20 to 22 kids per class with six sessions, and then last year, there were seven sections, that number might be a little bit lower. But what I saw for this year was more of an average of 18 for six sections, which would bring you to 108 kids versus maybe what we've had in the past, maybe been a good 120-plus. So, I don't know, and it sounds like that's where we're headed possibly for next year too, so I'm just curious if that's, you know, if that's going to continue.
Does anybody else like to speak? Okay. Well, thank you very much. And so, next week, we will have our approval of the budget.
A few minor tweaks. A few minor tweaks, and a few less slides.
A few less slides, great. Okay.
Well.
I think our wonderful administrators here.
Good night, thank you all.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a five-minute break? Do we leave this for the agenda, or do the committee just remember? Are you guys good to go, or do you want to take a three-minute break?
Go fast, I guess.
Yeah, okay. So, and the committee reports, which we didn't do last month, so I think we should try and do them this month. Particularly, I'm very excited about all the work going on with buildings and grounds, and we've been doing some heavy lifting, so I don't know if you're ready to speak on that. Yeah. And for those of us who are on the outside, I'm sure are all excited to hear about it. So, we'll turn to the committee reports, and is there someone who would like to speak about the work of building the grounds?
Well, down the street, Catherine's not here, and she participated in a few more meetings than I did. I may have to refer to Carol a little bit, but we did have our last meeting, which, I don't know if it was on the agenda, March 20th, and we met with our architect. I was impressed, I thought they did a very good job, just really just, they had walked through our buildings and facilities with Carol.
So, they seemed thorough.
I thought they were impressive, I really did. And I thought that they did a good job in ascertaining what, they just kind of gave us a general step back of what they saw, that they wanted to kind of get our direction on likewise, really, some of our concerns, for example, the main entrance, what our thoughts were, how we entered the building, where we parked the cars, the flow of the cars. I mean, so they had spent, I don't know, how many hours did they deal with you?
No, Mr. Karen and I spent a while walking.
Right, it certainly seemed that way. So, I thought that their initial presentation was really just to show us that they were informed about building and facilities, and the general sense from last year.
Can you remind me the names, since I'll start to try and internalize?
H2M.
H2M.
No, that was the one. The two long names with H's and one M, and then they just decided they go H2M.
That's very clever. Okay, H2M.
And our next meeting is? And just, our next meeting is soon, but this week, our construction manager, RFP, proposing to do that week Thursday, depending on how many months we get, so the builders are asking, they have to work on, from proposed, to hire, hopefully hire a construction manager.
Is that, that role is something that was part of the bond last time?
Typically, without a small bond, you might not, you might slide by without it, but with larger bonds, you might slide by. And this district made a plan mistake long ago, not on.
Yeah, so last time.
And the last time, we.
Different roles. So, we essentially, we hired, last time, we hired essentially a clerk of the works that policed everybody, monitored it, because he was a knowledgeable engineer. The construction manager has, takes on a different role.
Yeah, in the world of projects, the construction manager can save you a lot of money because they can get bids, help you get, you know, first of all, they can help focus us on the process. Well, the architect will dream up the things we need, the construction man will tell you that box may have a technical, they help round you.
And I think last time, we relied on the architects to.
Right, and that oftentimes, then, your estimates are wrong, and maybe certain things are wrong information. So, usually, a construction manager would have much better sense of that. And what I'm hoping to get out of this would be that they, that their services were plus planning, that's where they actually live, so that's typically how it fits, I'm curious to see how it's going to work. So, you know, it could be different, but we're hoping, because that's really the next work, and then we also need to learn working on the.
You chose a stakeholder committee as well, there was applications, and did the committee review and select the committee?
This must be one of our, my first, very close.
Okay. And how many, what's sort of the makeup of that committee?
It's teachers, it's staff members, it's the board.
About 20 people, 15?
Maybe about 25.
About 25, okay. And so, a handful of them are community members, or board members?
The only question I have for Carol is that, because we haven't had a meeting since March 20th, is how is Altiris going to work with this? So, we have a security consultant that is going to work with, you know, this like $100,000 amount of money possibly, do we also go back to K2M and get their?
H2M.
H2M, sorry.
Yes, so when we get to things like the vestigial, or some of the security stuff, then we wouldn't involve both of them, you know, during a meeting or phone conversation, however we can. So, yes, they're working, and H2M has worked with Altiris. They've worked with Altiris. It's a tight committee.
And how soon do you see that happening? Is that something that will be by June, that we try to get both of those groups in together?
If you don't agree with that.
Okay.
Great. Great, any, any other final notes, or?
Really, the, the next big push for B and G is getting this group together, it's twenty-five people, scheduled those meetings, whole of the process, it's gonna be.
Uh, okay, so then we have, uh, communications, I think. Had the council meeting in March, I guess. But the one thing I did wanna point out, uh, one, you noted the survey, and so hopefully, uh, we'll start to get some initial feedback about how it's going at our.
I do have some, I haven't actually gotten a report, but as of, I had a phone call with them this evening, and I wanna say there were so far a hundred students completed as of, like, uh, five o'clock.
That's community, that's including students and, and.
We haven't even gotten to students yet, I would say there were a hundred fif- um, roughly a hundred fifty, um, community slash parents, um, and then about thirty, and then the students are being scheduled to the school building.
So that's already, we've already sort of hit our number for what another bid survey would have done, but, like, the food service survey got a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty?
It's two weeks, that was. And they were impressed by our turnout so far.
Great. Uh, and then the other thing I wanted to share is that everybody in the district should have got the, the website, which was a, uh, worked on the reformat, uh, so it's a new look, uh, Dr. Harrison has two binders full of, uh, two decades worth of. Why do I feel like aliens?
Yeah.
But, uh, so, so hopefully, everybody has, has noticed it in their mail, uh, always lots to learn from, from the new stuff. And then, any, Laura, did you want anything to add from, or Maria from the communications? Again, we didn't have a meeting, yeah, uh, we did, we did have a curriculum meeting, and, uh, battery is dying again. We did, we did have a, a, I think a very thoughtful, uh, frank conversation just about, uh, trying to, from a board administration perspective, understanding, um, how our professional development progresses over the, over the next, uh, coming years, and so I think that's, um, an ongoing conversation, um, in terms of the, uh, what we talked about, what, uh, Dr. Cor presented earlier about the balance assessment, we, Dr. Harrison spoke about with the program assessment, and about, about the work of, uh, the professional development work in terms of, uh, we have a new calendar, uh, for next year, um, and looking at other ways in which we can continue to, uh, push forward on that work, um, so.
Well, no, no, I do wish that was a question.
Yes. So, uh, that was a good dialogue, and, uh, I don't know if you wanna add anything from, from those, let me know.
I think the summary's there.
Uh, policy?
Be plugged along.
Yeah.
So.
We're nearing the end of the four thousand series in our review, which means that there's, uh, that, uh, I think we have another roughly forty pages or so. Um, yeah, so then there, we go back, and there'll be a few weeks of cleanup work and a couple of questions to get, uh, clarified by legal. Um, and then, um, we will be sharing them with the board in advance for review, um, and then adoption. So we'll definitely have four thousand done, I would really like to believe that we'll be heading into five thousand as we enter school year.
It's a goal.
I mean, one, one, uh, question I have is that, uh, we started the year excited to have a new draft, uh, governance, uh, documents, and, uh, handbook, and the challenge that we ran into is, is that some of what we like to operate under needs to align with policy, that needs to be changed. So, um, is, I don't know if there's a way to squeeze that in at some point this, this year, so we can adopt that, uh.
It's pretty easy, I mean, there was only two or three policies that we have to compare what's in the handbook against the existing policy, and maybe just looking for it to go in the direction of the government, or do we have our policy?
And I think, I know Deb, you've done that analysis, that I think that it, literally, that, that we could connect a phone or sit down one day and work that, connect illegal and or school board, uh, necessary to work out any things, or maybe a, a policy or two that, I, I would think we would have adopted them already, so I think we're, we're pretty good with, when I think of the series that would be impacted. Um, so we'd be just making modification when we go.
But one thing I'd love to do, and I don't know if there's considerations I'm not thinking of, but we do have a draft document that essentially we've been living under, you know, operating under, but with, uh, with the, um, you know, with the, uh, election coming up, I think it would be a great opportunity for, uh, folks who are considering, or who are running for the board, to have an opportunity to see it, because I think it's really informative about how we operate as a board. Um, so if there's not a problem with it, I'd love, we don't always release draft documents, but I think it would might be, we can talk about some more, but I think it might be helpful for, uh, for.
There is a draft.
There's a draft.
SGR was on the agenda.
Did we, is, is there a public draft? Is there a public draft version?
It was a public draft from last year, 'cause I commented on it.
We might, maybe we might put that on our, on our website then, just so that it's, uh, folks can find it. Uh, it's not, we know it's not the final version, but basically, we're just tweaking, uh, actually the policy side.
Yeah.
You know, I think when, you know, Deb and I looked at the different things, that we thought that we had in our existing, uh, you know, larger policies, the necessary policies, the line, the back option, I think it looks to be, you know, change some pilots, and, and for the most part, I think we can turn that to either that.
Good, great. So, um, that's excellent. And then, um, any other updates from food service, perhaps? That's been a big to do. Alumis.
That was a very successful meeting, I believe, and then I was, I was consulting, I'm also gonna be spending a third one, maybe, now, to go over some of the, the.
I think you've seen it, but there was a FAQ that came out that answered a number of questions that, uh, some board members and some community members had, and that's available on our website. All right, any, any other?
Yeah, the curriculum trade, we get the best summation of last curriculum.
Well, let's hear, let's hear the submissions, it's fine, you, you happen to step out, but go for it.
I was gonna say, it was very much in line with our conversation around program assessment.
Yes. Good, so we align on what we said, they're good.
Did we?
Yes.
Really? Good, we were on.
You participated in the same meeting, I would hope that is.
I did, I, me too, I'm glad I did.
I feel like we're on like the match game or something.
Yes, yes, exactly. All right, well, as, as, we know we're getting late when we start to giggle about, uh, so, uh.
Giggle about policy.
I giggle about policy and curriculum committee. So I, I wanna move on to our consent agenda, uh, help me see if there's anybody we need to, to thank this time around.
Yep.
Donations, I have grants.
Sorry.
Uh, so, uh, can I get a, a motion to accept our consent agenda? Are there any questions about any items before we move to approve? Okay, can I get a, a vote to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, I wanna thank the, the Irvington Education Foundation, uh, who donated ten thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars, uh, related to yoga and meditation, and tiny homes. So, that's a good combo. Uh, all right, so that, I think concludes our, uh, public meeting, and, uh, our next meeting will be next week, which is seventeenth, seventeenth of, of April, uh, here at seven thirty. And I'm blanking to go to.
Executive session.
To, to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations and possibly also personnel. Can I get a, a motion?
So, no.
Second, all in favor? Let's take a five minute break.